All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing?
Doing great.
Again, sorry for the tardiness. This will serve as the City of Douglas Mayor and Commission Work Session on this September 23rd, 2019. As always, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Charlie Davis to lead us through this.
Good evening, Mayor Commission.
Good evening.
First item on the agenda to review on September 9th, 19 minutes.
The Mayor of Douglas has signed a new check to the Miss Christie, and Miss Woodman has placed my...
You see it?
Yes, sir. I've made a motion that goes on the consent agenda.
Okay. Commissioner Dern?
I went over the minutes. I wasn't here, but I'm over it now.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Moore? Commissioner Pierce?
Have not looked at the minutes. However, I'll look at them during break. And if it's fine, I'll move forward.
We'll carry it forward.
Thank you.
Next.
So, we're taking that four or a commission?
We're taking that four.
Taking it forward, because I haven't had a chance.
Item two, TAB V, discussing purchase of water supplies for the optimal chemical project in America. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Doing great. Here to talk to you about water supply bid for optimal chemical project. Uh, we'll rec... What does... Give you a little background on this. Uh, what we're actually doing here, we're ending up putting a eight-inch meter. It's kind of like special meter. Actually, a lot shine through the water and it's very extensive, which calculates the water a whole lot better than O-type meters. And what it's also going to do is there's a bunch of smaller meters in optimal chemical, and they're going to do away with all small meters. That is one meter service, everything in optimal chemical. So, we do away with a bunch of small meters that are probably inaccurate and stuff like that, and just have it one meter.
Thank you.
So, we don't recommend that Mayor Commission approve below bids that discuss an airport session. Water supplies for optimal project and approved below bids submitted by the San Diego Pipe and Supply located in Wexler, Georgia, for a grand total of all awarded items, thirteen thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars. Put it out there.
Mr. Moore?
Um, we're going to go with it. From the consent.
Commissioner Pierce?
So, has this ever happened with any other plants or industries before that we did something like this? How... How... How does that affect?
Well, that's the... Uh, from what I understand and talking to Mr. Hudson, he can elaborate if need be, but all these bigger plants, you know, they went to these type meters to try to, uh, catch all of the water that we have lost in the past to make sure we're getting, uh, correct count of gallons on our larger suppliers of water.
Okay.
Normally, when we do a new industry, we would do this at the front end, but optimal chemical has been pieced in so many times. They've added, added, added. They're in the process right now of putting in a three-story office building on the property. So, this was the perfect time to try to get rid of it, because we're going to have another four-inch meter set. We have about, what, about six or seven meters out there now on property. Seven meters on that property, if we can get down to one water meter, helps us when we start looking for leaks. We can go to one source. So, it's just, it's something, you know, should have done probably a while back. It's just the perfect time to do that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm fine with it to go to consent.
Commissioner McNeil?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Dern?
Consider.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Next item, item three, TAB V, discussing airport capital improvement plan for years FY 2020 through FY 2025. George Henderson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
What do you have before you in your package and standard? Each year, we bring before you the update to the airport capital improvement plan. Um, there were some changes made to some of the projects that were shuffled around after talking to the industrial authorities and Airport Commission, different ones. Um, as you all know, we've been talking, um, with Mr. Riley, trying to work out an agreement with him. So, one of the projects that was moved up was the reconstruction of the historic hangar that's missing from the historic side of the airbase. So, we moved that project up, which caused some of the other ones to move down on the list. But everything else is pretty standard. It's a five-year, um, update from FY 2020 to 2025. And this did go before the Airport Commission, so tonight we'll see your approval for the five-year capital improvement, um, plan for those years I mentioned, FY 2020 to 25, for the Davis Municipal G. Chainers Airport.
Commissioner Pierce?
Yes. Uh, Ms. Henderson, you mentioned it to me. I told her I'd be in agreement with it. Is... Are there any significant changes, Ms. Henderson? I haven't had a chance to review the package.
The... The most significant one was that of the reconstruction of the historic hangar. That wasn't on the update, like, on the plan last year. So, because we didn't make that amendment, we got to bring it before you all for your proof, because when it comes time for the budget, then this will be considered in the budget. And the reason it was added, we found out from, um, our representative with G.D. Aviation Division, and they offer funds on the state and federal level to help reconstruct the hangar.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm fine with it, what I said.
What's that? Mr. Moore? Mr. McNeil?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Dern?
Consider.
Mr. Gall?
Consider.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Next item is discussing the amending the Unified Land Development Code of George Henderson also. Okay, Roger. Good evening.
Good evening.
In the Unified Land Development Code, it's basically living documents that need to be looked at from time to time and change, admitting to where we're going to grow. Or we have those submitting applications to startup businesses or work. Old businesses usually that we need to do some housekeeping. In the Gateway area, uh, we found that the now new bars, the nightclubs, convenience stores, and mini-stores, it's not a conforming use in Unified Land Development Code. The previous Unified Non-Developed Code allowed these uses to be there. And due to some expansion and some new requests, we're asking to amend the Unified Land Development Code and fix them in accordance in the code to allow these type businesses in the Gateway area. So, we're here to ask for the first reading of the order.
Commissioner Pierce?
And that's to amend it as to allow now this bar, nightclub, convenience stores, and the storage places to be in that district, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Uh, based on how Ms. Henderson and I discussed it last week, I'm... I'm... I'm in favor of amending to include those in the Gateway district. Well, this is for a reading, okay?
Correct. Mr. Moore? Mr. McNeil?
Yes, sir. So, this will... Let me make sure. This is not... This is not just to protect the ones that are there that weren't protected before. This is to actually allow for future.
Correct.
Okay.
We're good? Mr. Taylor?
We're good.
Mr. Dern?
Great.
Mr. Mayor Protemp?
You would...
All right. We'll be taking that four for the first read?
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Uh, next item, item five, TAB V. Look at that meat.
Sorry about that, y'all.
Yeah, take that.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Davis?
Next item is discussing the rebuilding, resurfacing Evergreen Avenue. Um, yes, in the agenda, United States has been working on this to put this in next year's agenda, uh, next year's budget. Uh, received a call last week from Commissioner Pearson to ask us to put it on the agenda item for this week to discuss it. So, as everybody knows, Evergreen Avenue, uh, born off Baker Highway. You turn in, it's an old concrete highway that was put in there when the developer built it. Uh, that concrete is given away now, and so it is in the... And, you know, and this one's not like typical for resurfacing, but on regular asphalt road, they go in there and it's resurfaced it. But on this one, it's got to be dug completely up. Uh, aggregate base put under it and then asphalt put on it. Uh, but anyway, so it was actually put on the agenda. Commissioner Pearson, if you want to say something?
Well, while I campaigned, well, which, no, not actually while I campaigned. I think I brought it before, like, a year or so ago, uh, about trying to get it redone, and we were told that how expensive it's going to be to have it done. So, uh, last week, some of the residents on Evergreen, they were like, the only complaints that they have is the fact that that road is as bad as it is. It's just really crumbling up. So, I told them, while I was at one of the residence homes, I told them then I was going to go ahead and call right then, so I wouldn't forget it, to, uh, to get it on the agenda. I don't know if any Evergreen people are here tonight. Don't look like it.
Got one.
One? Okay. Okay. Yeah, I talked with y'all. Okay. Good. And, uh, so... So, you... You're saying that it's on the, uh, it's on... It's scheduled for next year?
Um, you know, it's on the original list, about eight years out. Um, but whatever's happening under that concrete, it is given away faster than the initial assessment was done. And so, it's going to have to be moved up instead of the regular seven years. So, we're trying to package it now so that we can have it in the, uh, on the next budget. So, when we come together in January, February, we start working on the next budget. So, hopefully by next July, we could have something rolling on that. Um, and we're also working with, uh, uh, the county. Oh, go ahead, I can marry if you want to.
Um, actually, I started talking to a citizen on Evergreen about two years ago about this, and we just had a ballpark figure of about three hundred thousand dollars to do this road. But one of the things for the citizens that are here, the city only spends about a quarter of a million dollars each year in paving for the entire city. We get about a hundred fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand from Al-Mig, and then we throw another hundred thousand. At the time, a ballpark figure of three hundred thousand dollars would basically take all of that away. Well, about six months ago, the same citizen contacted me, and I was like, look, we still about the same thing. And then I said, well, hold on. Let me call Commissioner Polk. So, I called Commissioner Polk. You know, Commissioner Polk helped us out a couple of years ago in paving over there around the American Legion in that area. So, Commissioner Polk said, hey, give us an estimate. Give us something to work with. So, we received that estimate on September the 11th from Land Court. Came in about a hundred and sixty-one thousand. Again, talked to Commissioner Polk, and he said, hey, let's put it in the hands of Wesley. Let's take a look at it, see if the county can actually chip in. So, uh, I also talked to the young lady that was scheduled to be on the agenda today. Uh, what's her name? Sha... Shafer? Sure. Yeah. Talked to her, explained what I just said, and she said that she was fine. There's no need for her to come down here and be on the agenda. I explained to her that the desire is there to repave that road. However, we're already in a budget, and those dollars have already been allocated. Well, this is almost perfect time, and one, if I can, uh, talk nice to Commissioner Polk and maybe get a couple of dollars, and us being at the beginning of our budget process, we start our retreat, I think, in February, somewhere up in there. Now, we're trying to, uh, allocate dollars that are unallocated to that. And she said, uh, I'm fine with that. I said, hey, let me screenshot this proposal to you. And she said, her and the other friends was going to walk the neighborhood and say that they were fine with that.
Okay. Well, as the commissioner for that district, um, and I understand that it's costly, but this item has... This is not the first time that this has come up. It's actually been in the situation it is in for quite some time. So, my thing is, um, I think we need to not put it out until next year's budget. We need to see if we have some money somewhere to go ahead and get it done as soon as possible. Mr. Davis? I want it done as soon as possible, because I haven't drove another community that has the situation that this road has. This is one of the worst. And furthermore, I don't know... Who was the developer over there?
Originally, it was Bill, Mr. Law, Francis Law.
Okay. So, why would the city allow it to be cemented?
Mr. Allen, please.
Prior... Prior to the unified code, you know, now we... If somebody wants to turn straight over to the city now, it has to be built up to our standard, the actual standard put in place way back when there wasn't standard. And most times, when somebody build a road, they would turn it over to the city, re-inherited whatever. But, uh, but today, that couldn't happen today unless y'all overrode that decision, because the policy states it has to be built to whatever our standards are, certain type of basis, certain thickness of asphalt, and all that kind of stuff.
Did you find any history on it? When was that, uh... When was that subdivision actually developed?
It was in the early eighties. Uh, they said it's early eighties, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Uh, um... What year did you move over there?
Oh, I was in the nineties, so it was already developed when I moved over.
Mr. Wilson, I'm sorry. So, it was in the nineties?
About ninety-five.
Well, you know, 'cause we're... I mean, I... I hear what you're saying. So, you said... What did your... What did Commissioner Polk say, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Commissioner Polk, uh, right now is we've sent the estimate over to the county, and he's waiting for him and Wesley to get together, point some numbers, and see if there's anything that they can't do.
Okay. 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 Well, being that we're waiting to look, see how the numbers look with them, you know, uh, I... We'll... We'll hold off on it, but as soon as we hear something from the county, I think we need to try to get this handled as soon as possible. I don't want to wait till next budget year. Uh, because like I said, for years, those residents have told me about, you know, the situation and circumstances in that road.
And no matter when we do it, if we do it tomorrow, or we do it two years from now, it's going to be a... For those residents, it's going to be a horrible situation, because that concrete got to be dug up and the road shut down. And for them, being able to access back to Baker Highway or one of Evergreen Lane, cutting back around to, uh, I think it's Evergreen Place, uh, it's going to be... So, we're going to have to kind of like do half of the road on one side and dig it up, and then shift it, and then dig up the other half, and then shift it back. And it's going to be, uh, it's not going to be a normal process, because it's like anything. A new house is easy, but when you're trying to live in a house that you're remodeling, it becomes hard.
Basically difficult.
Uh, so anyway, so it's going to be one of those things.
Yeah. Well, I understand that, but I think they'll be fine with that, long as they're not having the drive on. They're having the drive on, though. I think it'll be worth it to them.
And they'll... They'll take it about twice as long as a normal repaving, but they've got to... So, we got to do all that. So, I just want them to know, whenever it happens, it's going to be...
Conveni...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But yeah, but they do have that other road back behind over there that they can access to get out. I mean, you know.
Thank goodness.
Yeah.
My thing is this right here. As I've talked with, uh, the young lady and a few citizens over there on Evergreen, even talked to Mr. Wilkerson before his meeting, of course, Johnny has, uh, more insight, because he's been doing these meetings forever. So, he understands the financial piece is that, you know, it's a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars that we did not budget. So, doing it during this budget year calls for us to have to take money from other parts of the budget that we've already approved in order to do this. So, when I talked with the young lady and the citizens over there, they were fine with us waiting on the county and not to disturb the current budget. It's just that they wanted to know that we were moving forward on this. And as I told the young lady today, I said, when you went down to the city, it was like on the twentieth. Look at the, uh, the, uh, the estimate. It's dated September the 11th. So, we were already working on this. So, hopefully, uh, we'll get to...
And I... I hear you, Mr. Mayor, not meaning to cut you off, but, you know, we all know it's election time, and... And we might not even be up here next time when the budget comes. So, I would like to have done, if at all possible, while this administration is here. I just want to put that out there, because, see, the citizens not looking at that. They... They don't think on that level about it's going to be a different administration possibly. So, you know.
I understand what you're saying.
And like I said, I've represented that district for twenty years, so... And it's been a problem. So, if we can get it done this year, uh, before this administration goes out and changes or whatever, I'd like to see what we can do about that. But we're looking to see what your father and, uh, and Wesley have...
Yes.
Thank you.
I definitely agree it needs to be done. I really had a chance to ride down there, because, uh, the city manager told me about it, and that is a bumpy road.
It is.
Yeah. I'll... I'll make sure, continue to remind this, uh, Mr. Davis about that, that I don't think that'll be an issue. But I... I look forward to it.
Oh!
Keep those folks...
Wow!
Meet the Wilkes-Barre there, straight road. Woo! As a bonus. Is that... That's the only road that we have, and the city limits is concrete like that, isn't it? That's the only option. Is there one more?
I don't know if you... I don't know if you remember, but there... There was a concrete street behind the old courthouse at one time, between... Between the old courthouse and the old jail. And I was told that was the first street in Douglas since clay. And it played in the concrete.
Well, Mr. Anderson just pointed out to me that there are various types of paving that can be done. He mentioned something called a base clay paving. So, you know, there might be other ways of... Of doing, getting it done that might be even less expensive. So, thank you for that, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, so seen, man. Aggregative, bakery-based, and all that kind of stuff.
Cool. Next on the agenda?
The next item, we've got three items, uh, on the, uh, general comments. First is Rodney McElven from Regional Library. He's here. Okay. It's right here? Okay. Next item, item two, Rossco Allen. Mr. Allen's here to discuss some issues about the subdivision.
So, as Mr. Allen is going to the podium, uh, we're going to make sure that we stay within our three-minute timeframe. So, Mr. Allen, if you would, at the conclusion of your three minutes, uh, we're going to proceed with the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. I don't really get into the division situation, but they say that, what, the new face put in the paper on the last paper they wrote? They said that our ordinance has been suspended when I found out. The ordinance hadn't been suspended. That's a lie. It got suspended when I hired a lawyer to sue the city, then they brought that in. Because I put Michael Law in my truck and carried him over there. He told me to get on the agenda. We got the... We break it like we done the rest of it. So, that power was not suspended. That's a lie. Number two, Tony Paul. I want you to listen real good, you hear me? Now, I got this out. Y'all open record question, sunshine law. I want you to listen real good, you hear me? Listen good now. All right. This three minutes. There never was no three minute in the work session. You understand that, y'all? I'm... This is law right here. They... They on fire now. Well, it would never know three minute in the work session. It would three minutes with audit anticipation, with three minutes. In a work session, you get to spend long, you want space. And this come out y'all fire. Open record sunshine law, Mr. Paul. I want you to listen to it. You got... Okay. You don't run this city by yourself, brother. I remember what I say. Now, this what it says now. It said that according to a chart, y'all chart, you got that, Mr. Paul? Instead of done a government by Robert Rule of Order, New Revised Section 28, Pardonsary Procedures, Section 2-29, spaced at the mayor, sheriff's side. You got that? Not make decision for what I'm gonna do here. Y'all got nothing. Y'all, uh, uh, audit just said that a person got three minute in a work session. That's a fight now. This come out y'all on fire, Mr. Paul. So, you were wrong last week telling I only got three minute in a work session. Know your law. Know your rules, I am. Do the mail. All right. I'm going to finish reading. Now, you got that? Now, it says this right here. That the mayor, sheriff's side, and all the mission be... That's what it said, preside. Okay. It said preserve order and decorum. It said none about no three minute in no work session. Y'all got that? This come out y'all fire. I request this. Ain't no audit that say nothing about no three minute in the work session. You got that? So, you're wrong. Now, all y'all up there, the missions, need to know what's going on up here. You got that? It's wrong. So, you kept... You were wrong last week. You told me I only had three minutes. Know your rule. Know your regulation. You got that? That's all I got to say now.
And Mr. Anderson, you'll share that with Ms. Henderson, so she can...
Yeah. I said, I want to share it with you. Come out the mail there.
You'll get copies for... Or Roger? Roger.
Roger.
Roger. You'll get copies for me?
I'll come... I'll get some copies tomorrow. Don't worry about that.
He's going to go right to the copy room, Mr. Anderson. He's bringing it right back to you.
Ain't... Ain't got nothing in your work session. It said nothing about no three minutes. No audit, no nothing. I'm going to write, Mr. Jerome. I pulled everything that had. I had Romulo to write it down and put it for me.
Mr. Allen.
Now, I said, I knew that.
Thank you.
Ain't nothing to be like that. Fight it, fight it.
Next on the agenda, we have, uh, I think, Ms. Richardson.
Yes, Reverend Lynette Richardson's here to speak.
Yes. Ms. Richardson? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank the, uh, I want to thank the... And thank the commission for allowing me to do that today tonight. Thank you so much. And, uh, I'd like to... It's okay. With the mayor and the commission, and I just can... For a little... Just a brief prayer, to why I presume that's what I got to say. Now, I'll say a few words and sit down, and then we do this prayer. But that's what the problem is now. Believe God, I can do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm going to do this prayer, because, Most Holy Father, we will come together with your mighty God before the throne of grace. And we come around with the mayor and the commissions and all of the most of the residents and friends and neighbors and... Now, thank your Lord for bringing us back your safety. Lord, I just thank you, Lord. I know you're able tonight to give everybody in here their heart desires and whatever they ask of you to do. God, I know you're able to do it. I know that all power lies in your hand tonight, God. You is able, God. The God of Abraham and the God of Isaac, the God of Jacob, the God of Paul and Solomon, Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego, Lord. Lord, I know you're able tonight, Lord. You're able, God. You is able, Jesus. Come on in and see tonight, Lord, and bring peace up in here, Lord. Bring peace where there is confusion, Lord. Bring it together, Lord, as one people like you want us to be, Lord. That's what I come tonight, Lord, to be one people, to be like you want me to be, Lord. To be with love and unity. Amen. What I'm here tonight, um, I want to... I know the... The mayor and, uh, the commission know what I'm here about on the coffee china house for the people. Maybe some of you here tonight does not know about the... What I... The house for the people. So, I'm trying to feed the... The hungry and people around coffee china. I want to get a house, uh, that will bring people off the street. And the mainly thing I want to do is if the... For so many young peoples that out there that need to be off the street. And I want to turn them around. Turn their lives around. I believe once you get them in the... But see, the house is going to be more than about just sitting down to the table you need it. There's going to be so many things going on in this house, you know. The Lord give me a vision, and when he give you a vision, you got to work that vision. When God give you a vision, he give me this vision. And I just want y'all to, uh, work with me with this project to help me. And, uh, I know you already said that you're going to do it, and, uh, I'm taking you on your word, because a man's word is his bond. If you go against your word, you go against everything you stand for and everything that God's given to you. Thank you, Father.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No updates? All right.
I have something, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, first of all, again, I'm going to ask the question, Mr. Davis. Uh, is there a... An executive session scheduled for tonight?
No.
So, Mr. Davis, approximately, how long have I been asking for an executive session?
Three months, I believe.
Okay. So, do you mind answering me what reason you have not scheduled an executive session when I have constantly been asking about one?
We have nothing on hand to go into the executive session.
We have nothing at, on hand to go into the executive session.
What other, what other issues to discuss executive, in executive session?
Land acquisition, ending, uh, legal lawsuits, um, uh, personnel issue that needs mayor commission, uh, uh, conversation on.
Yes or no, have, ha, when, when, when I was told by the mayor that the council needed heads up on what reason we need to have an executive session, did I not mention personnel?
Right, and if we have a pending lit, litigation or personnel action that needs y'all's, uh, discussion on, we would have, like, we would have a, um...
Is that what it states specifically, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
It needs, it needs, uh, pending litigation that needs our action on?
If we get started with a lawsuit or something, we have to go into executive.
So, so do we not discuss, sorry to cut y'all, do we not discuss issues about employment in the executive session?
If, if there were, if there's a need to discuss a personnel issue, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what would grant a need to discuss a personnel issue in executive session?
I mean, most time they're attached to a legal situation, uh, 'cause, I mean, the regular departmental issues, regular day-to-day operations, those things are not really issues that we really go before the mayor council.
So, you're saying the only time we've been in an executive session regarding personnel was when it was attached to a legal issue?
I mean, if, if we wanted, if I was, if I needed to bring something to y'all, I could bring something.
What about if we want to discuss something?
I mean, if y'all, if y'all have four votes to go into a, a executive session, y'all could go in.
So, if I have expressed to you that we need to discuss something with personnel, you mean, you're telling me that you are not going to, and you have not, place it on the agenda item for an executive session?
Yeah, I mean, at this moment, I have nothing to discuss, I mean, everything.
But I've had concerns, Mr. Davis, for about three months, you just said.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you mean to tell me, for working for this mayor commission, with me having concerns, you don't respect me enough to get it into executive session to answer any concerns I have?
I mean, if y'all want, if you, if you're asking for executive session and, and y'all feel the need to go into one?
You can put it on the, the agenda, Mr. Davis, without us. You can do that.
But it has to be a pending, I mean, I can't just go in and say I wanna just discuss.
Okay, all right, so let's do this. I have asked, as you just stated, for about three months about an executive session. And I've mentioned that there are personnel concerns that I've had questions about or concerns about. So, we have not went into executive session. So, since we have not went into executive session, again, when I mentioned before it was a personnel issue that I wanted to discuss, I had to bring it out on the floor. I'm gonna do that again, okay? So, I would like to know, what is the current status of the appeals process regarding Britt Lever, a former, a former city employee?
I mean, all, all the events surrounding that, all that being placed in your box, you have all the information from, from A to Z, uh...
It's been placed in, in these envelopes?
Yes, ma'am.
So, when did they get in the box?
Friday.
Okay, so I was in the house. Say if you didn't have it. I called and I messaged with Brittany.
I was on, was that me?
But, yeah, for you to give me the results, and you told Brittany there were no results of it.
No, I didn't tell her wasn't there.
Yes, I asked for something, I asked for something, Brittany.
I told her Brittany.
Brittany, I asked for something, Brittany. You said, but it's okay, because see, you're an employee too. You're an employee, and when your thing on, that you're not treated fair, you're gonna wanna be, you're gonna want some help. You're gonna want some help.
Okay.
Because Stevie Young is Britt Lever's immediate supervisor. He did not fire Britt. He didn't fire. The policy says you have to be fired by your immediate supervisor. Stevie didn't even know anything about it.
Okay.
Yes, you say okay, because you know it's not true. They have not policies. Starts with, uh, with the city manager.
Mm-hmm.
And ends with the city manager. It's not a policy. It's complete. Anybody knows that. How can you have a person that fires you to be the same person that besides your appeal? There is no fairness in that. There is no fairness in that. And for these commissioners to sit up here and uphold this kind of foolishness, it's wrong. It is wrong, and they need to be voted out. They need to be voted out.
Amen.
They need to be voted out.
Everybody laugh.
Because it's, it's sad, this is sad. Because we have, we have a dictatorship here in the city of Douglas. We have a dictatorship. That's what, that's what they're running up here. Because there is no way Charlie Davis should be doing what he allowed to do, what he's doing.
If he was proud of what he had done, he would allow scrutiny, and he would allow transparency. But there, he is not proud of what he's done, he knows it's flawed, but he, but we, we're to be quiet.
Yeah, just go along with it. Just shut up and go along with it. It's sad.
Mr. Robinson, I have you, sir.
Of all my years of studying government, government is not supposed to operate like this, Mr. Anderson. Government is supposed to be ran by the people, for the people, other people. It, it's not being ran like that. They have a dictatorship, just like they got a dictatorship on these utility bills, so it's having seven, eight, nine, and a thousand dollar utility bills that they won't even bother to look into. It's sickening, it's really sickening. And, and I'm saying that, that I'm a part of this. I'm, I'm so sad that they treat people like this.
Mayor Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I heard you did a, you just did a lot of talking, but I didn't hear you reference GMA and assistant from GMA. Don't, don't, wouldn't, don't you think that somebody needs to have some, some questions answered?
I can tell you, Mr. Ryan, in the past, when I've contacted GMA, we do have a nu, a new person of GMA that's over the legal department now. But in the past, when I've contacted GMA, they would say that needs to be handled between your city manager and your city attorney. That will be the answer that, that you will get. But that, we do have Rishi Patel, who's the new, uh, legal person for GMA. I will reach out to Mr. Patel.
The reason I ask that, because I, I, I'm, I'm, I record thirty cities with this type of problems.
Mm-hmm.
And I just never seen it the way I see it here.
Yes, sir.
And I commend the cities that are carrying out the, the, the affairs of the people like it should.
Right.
But I have never seen wherein the, the elected officials don't have equal share. And it seem like, you know, so, I think GMA would be, probably would be your best bet.
Yes, sir, thank you, I will definitely reach out to them, because this is, this is really ridiculous now, it's sad. Sad. Census of the mayor council to not continue this line of push, they can do what they want to do.
Yeah, they can. Fairly they can, right?
No, they never.
Fairly they can.
That's why he... I don't know what you wanna do for two more weeks.
And why, why am I not listening, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, she, she filled out a paper.
I filled out a paper, and...
And Charlie denied her coming to talk.
And so did Tommy, Tommy.
Oh, Paul. Well, you can talk online, so Mr. President. Yes, fine, yeah. My lawyers will be my talking. And there's two lawsuits, there's two lawsuits, 'cause on Friday, my lawyers will start no speaking. It's, it, I mean, it beats all I've ever seen. Everybody walked out, all the chickens in the house. And nobody got no bad part of it. This don't make no sense. One person controls four people to walk off the panel. And they know. Like, how grown folks control other ones? We ain't chairman. You must represent your ward and speak for your ward, send up there running. I don't understand this.
But I'm gonna go back on...
And these the people y'all vote for. And Charlie, Charlie Davis said in this packet, one of the letters, he said, he got court from the assistant DA as the justice general to release information concerning these cases. What about information concerning the theft that I brought up? I brought up, uh, months ago, about there was a man stealing in the lock, in the electric department. What about that? He's not telling us anything about that. But these commissioners saying he doing his job and they filing. We haven't gotten any information about employees stealing from the electric department. Some electric poles that cost approximately, some of them run as high as ten thousand dollars. And these commissioners good with Charlie Davis doing?
The, the wording of the ad hoc committee was, the general consensus was... General consensus, that does not say unanimous decisions, majority. What we understood was a one person said that the processes were correct, and that stood.
Right.
So, three of them, we understood, were for my husband, and one was for the city, city mayor manager. But the one overruled the three, but if y'all think that's fair, that's fair for me to talk to you.
They know it's not fair.
Well, if he's released the papers, you should be able to see it. Uh, he doesn't say in there who have they voted.
That was, that was strategically done.
Right.
That they get provided the papers, 'cause I specifically asked for the papers of how they voted.
And then they don't want you to ask the questions that were asked.
Right.
You notice nobody's sitting here to answer those questions.
Yes.
Because they don't, they don't want you to, they don't want to tell you the answer to those questions, because they are incorrect.
They don't want, they, they, they don't want you to know that they hired somebody that's inaccurate of doing what they're supposed to do.
That's correct.
So, when you inaccurate of doing what you do, you do what people tell you to do. So, they tell you.
I hire somebody to come and ask me any questions you want, and I will answer.
That's right, if you feel like you were right in making that decision, that's a... I just feel like this, all this controlling, wrong people, it was just crazy, how you control? It's sad to have commissioners on the board that's gonna be dictated to what to do. It's a dictatorship. The citizens of Douglas got voted for people who can't think for themselves.
If you go private, we must like I had me be rated first to...
And Mr. Davis knew right off how long I'd been asking for executive session, I couldn't even recall. I knew it's been a while, when he started studying, he still lying.
There is pending litigation.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
It's in the appeals process, that is pending.
Right, right. Then they're gonna try to come before us and, and give us some hogwash that we supposed to swallow and just take it.
Right.
You know? I've had enough. I've had enough. It's so sad. It's sad. I'm adjourned to meet everybody, though. They don't, in the middle of the meeting. He got mad and... I'm just gonna adjourn to meet. They, everybody... It's sad. It's a shame when you control everybody on this vote, so I can see how the vote will go. Don't want me to express my concerns.
Oh, that's, okay.
And I don't, I don't know why the others didn't say, say anything. 'Cause they don't understand. They understand. They understand. It's not that difficult to understand. This what the citizens of Douglas like. This the kind of representation, representation they want, oh, well. No, sir, they're gonna live here. No, sir. No, sir. No, sir, I have not been on... No, we said. Yes, we are, we, we vote, we are four votes, four votes to get rid of that. And I want them too. So, it ain't we. Yeah, well, well, we need four votes. Well... We need four votes. Not we, Bob Moskowitz. No, Bob, Bob, I don't know what's going on with Bob, he's been here longer than anybody, he know what time it is. He know Charlie Davis ain't doing right. He paid a hundred sixteen bucks. Okay, ten thousand dollars. To treat people any kind of way. No bachelor, no... I could do that, girl. Give me, I'm a hundred sixteen. They can't help you buy my raise in Canada. They need to, this will be represented. But, 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 when Tony Paul first got his neck, he resigned. That part. Charlie Davis resigned, bitch. Mr. Robinson, what did the packet say? I thought you said you was all right with what the packet had, what it was saying. What did you say? What investigation did he do? You had everything? I'm gonna stop and take a good word. See stuff for yourself. And what did it say? The gist of it? The gist of it? The gist of it? The gist of it? What did they find? Yeah. What did they find? Yeah. So, so, so when I read it, when I read it, when I read it, you ready to discuss it? You read it. I'll skip. I'ma hold you to that. Okay. I'll give you my opinion, okay? I will give you my opinion. Okay, give you her opinion, I'll give you mine, okay? She was asking me, she was wanting me to summarize.
No, 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 I, I was laughing at the text. I was laughing at the text. I was laughing at the text.
I was not having a different...
All right, here we go. Uh, excuse me, if you were not present for the, uh, work session, would you please pull out your cell phone and physically check your cell phone and make sure it's on silent or vibrate? And we're gonna start. Mr. Davidson, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dern? Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moore? And Ms. Pearson?
Okay.
Good deal. Let me move some of these pens. Good evening?
Good evening.
Welcome to the city of Douglas. This will serve as our mayor and commission meeting. This will be our regular meeting for this September twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. And the implication, Commissioner Pearson?
Uh, thank you. Uh, is Reverend Brasswell present tonight? Okay, Reverend Brasswell, he'll step to the podium. If you have a scripture and prayer that you'd like to give, Reverend Theodore Brasswell from Everett Chapel, uh, CME, and also Oak Grove AME, Oak Grove. CME also, okay, thank you so much.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good evening, ask how you're doing.
There, there, there are two scriptures that I, I'd like to share with you. Now, one coming from the book of Gospel in the John, for the chapel. Jesus said, um, "I am the way, truth, and light, no man comes following by me." There's another one that I would like to just spend just a few minutes on. Proverbs four, seven, it says, "Wisdom is the proof of life. Therefore, get wisdom, but in all you get, get a good understanding." And we're in a world today where everybody feel that they are right. So, one of my churches imposed a question, what make right, right? Wrong, wrong, I pinned that sermon. What make right, right? Or wrong, wrong? Is it right because I feel that right? Or is it wrong because you feel that I'm wrong? And so, when Jesus was leaving, getting ready to leave, he, he asked a question. And so when Jesus leave me, get ready to leave, he, he answered the question. I am the way, the truth and life. I am the way, not you. I am the truth, not you, and life. So I believe that Jesus is right and most of us is wrong. So, because we all in the day about who right and who's wrong. I'm, I'm right, but you're wrong. It's not the way it go. It's not the way that you go. And so often we all go about who right and who wrong, because most of the time, we don't have a good understanding. So often, my wife and I used to have discussion and do a little heated discussion. Then we look at each other a lot of time and laugh, because I feel that I was right, you feel that I was wrong. And when we sit down, we just talk about that, we were saying the same thing. We just didn't have a good understanding about what we were saying. And, and I certainly noticed on a night to, to the citizens of Coffey County and, and the commission, it imposed a question, is, is it right because I feel that it's right? Or is it wrong because I feel that it's wrong? Let us pray, Father, we come now at this moment to ask you, God, to be in this meeting. You said, "What, whatsoever we bind on earth, you abide in heaven." We bind every foul spirit that comes into our meeting, into our city. Rest God that you will come in and bring peace and harmony. That whether we white, black, or whatever nationality, that we all live our lives in a peaceful way. We come against every shooting in every city, Lord. That you will bring forth good minds into our people. We bind that spirit. And then even as we talking with you now, Lord, we believe that it's done. Because you said it, or we have not, because we have asked now. We asking you in the mighty name of Jesus. Bless us, Father. One day when we have to leave this world, like many of our friends have already done, we ask God that you give us a home in your kingdom. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. Thank you for inviting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for accepting the invitation. Appreciate you.
Next on the agenda, we have the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand and face the flag. And we will be led by Coffey County Navy Junior ROTC. And tonight, we have with us Lieutenant Junior Grade Marina.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You okay over there, Mr. Williams?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, next on the agenda, we have approval of the order of the agenda. Spin motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is recognition of training slash community relations sergeant promotion. Mayor Commissioner?
How you doing, Chief?
Alright. Sergeant Williams. When I took this job back in March, one of my main goals was to handle community relations component within the, within the police department. And when I got here, we're doing a lot of training, we're doing a lot of recruiting, we're doing a lot of background checks. So I decided to split professional standards and training into two different positions. And with my community, uh, training comes community relations. And he will not be doing this alone. We hope to promote someone in the near future to, to assist in community relations. But Chad has been chosen, uh, we went through a process, he came out on top to be our new training community relations sergeant. Uh, this is my first promotion since I took office. And he excelled, uh, he did great in the process. Both of the young men who went through this process did great. Maybe proud. Um, and even, uh, we had five people come from other agencies come in and do this promotional process for us. And they were impressed with the agency we had here and our choices for sergeant. Uh, but Sergeant Williams, congratulations. This is, this is an honor. Here my first one. His wife is here. Uh, it's, it's, it means a lot for your wife to pin your badge. Uh, she gonna try to not stick him.
Oh, that's the whole point.
So, uh, so I think he had to buy a roses last night. Alright, congratulations.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda items. They always were trying to go over to our city manager to reiterate the items put on the consent agenda.
Mayor Commissioner, we have, uh, two items coming over on the consent agenda. We have, uh, item two, approval of the purchase of the work supplies for chemical projects. And item three, uh, approval of the airport capital improvement plan for years FY 2020 through FY 2025.
At this time, I entertain a motion. Spin motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is work session. Items brought forward for discussion, and I think we had the minutes in the first reading.
We got, we got two items coming over. One is for the approval, item one, approval of September 9th, the minutes.
Uh, Commissioner Pearson?
Yes, I have a chance to review them. They looks like what we discussing.
At this time, I will entertain a motion about the minutes. Spin motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Next item, the items four, and this will be the first reading of the meaning of ordinance for the Unified Land Development Code of Douglas.
This be very short, beautiful, named by the mayor of the municipal city of Douglas and regular meetings, soon to be approved there of Unified Land Development Code of the city of Douglas here by a meeting that stands uniform by meeting six three of Unified Land Development Code, Chapter Three, Table Three, one, which is a bit of a bar, nightclub, convenience stores, amusement centers, facilities, and the gateway zoning district off the rest of the first time the regular meeting, the mayor and local commissioners, uh, the city of Douglas on September 23rd, 1919, will have a second reading on October 14th.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, staff comments.
Just wanna share one announcement, one to remind the community that we will be hosting a chat and chew this week on September the 26th, 6:30 PM at the Boys and Girls Club. This, uh, one will be hosted by, um, Ward Four and Five, that is Commissioner Gowen and Commissioner McNeil. These listeners, uh, chat and chews are a time for our community to come out. It's a listening session. And also, we'll receive updates from the city of Douglas on what's going on, uh, within the government. So we just wanted to invite everyone to put on the colors and join us at the Boys and Girls Club this Thursday, 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Ms. Henderson, just a moment. You say September the 26th?
Yes.
What day is that?
This Thursday.
Commissioner, uh, Durham, is that the date that we'll be out of town? Is the training this week?
Yeah, Thursday, Friday.
Okay. And what time is that scheduled for on that 26th?
6:30.
Okay. It might not be bad, but anyway, okay. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the mayor and commissioners' comments. Uh, I would say this right here, uh, we've had enough theatrics, uh, for this evening. And my thing is this right here, we've helped the city's business. Uh, our work session was a little contentious. So my thing is this right here, I would like to forego the mayor and commissioners' comments and entertain a motion to adjourn. Spin motion and second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, we stand adjourned.
My, my, my. Dictatorship.
Gotta go.
Dictatorship.
Gotta go.
Dictatorship.
Went out though.
A dictatorship.
You heard, you're part of dictatorship.
A dictatorship, citizens of Douglas, you all do not have a democracy. You have a dictatorship with this mayor you have and certain commissioners.
Don't worry about it.
Moore, McNeil, and Gowen, and sometimes Taylor. A dictatorship. A dictatorship.
No, it's called being compassionate. I'm on the city council in Ambrose.
Tell him, tell him.
Ignore somebody's feelings or ruin somebody's life because they are accused of being guilty when they're not even given a chance to prove their innocence. And fired and ruined their life and their children's.
That's right.
I hope that y'all have to sleep with that.
Mm-hmm.
Cause elections coming up.
Right. Yeah.
And I had to vote, I had to be elected in the city of Ambrose. And I have a, I hope that I have enough compassion for our employees. Cause we had something like this similar to happen.
Yeah.
And we let him come before us and talk about it. He got fired by us and what he did. And we came, he, we hired him back because he was innocent.
I've seen that in many cities.
Yeah. This is sad.
They did this right here on this board.
This is sad. It's been said at one of the other meetings, this is one of the worst administrations ever. I've been on the council 20 years, and I can say, this is one of the worst administrations I've ever seen.
Ma'am, let me ask you a question. I go to, I have never seen a meeting adjourned like the one in Douglas this evening. And I'm going to 30 cities, if you go to Boston GBR, you'll see a lot of my videos. I've never seen this before. Why, why, why does the people sit on the council allow this to happen?
Because, because they don't have any gumption. They don't have any gumption. They, they gonna go along with whatever? Because they don't care enough. They don't care enough. If it was happening to their family members, it'd be a different story.
Have anybody, I mean, when I was in Gordon, and they, they called hell in Gordon with Mayor Rand Whippleau. And my question is, why have not somebody contacted GMA? I mean, this is what, even they, some of the cities that I've been to, they came down and they, and, and, and they gave training session. The Attorney General, uh, Sam Olens at the time, he came to, uh, Meds, cause I was in Meds with...
This mayor has denied us our freedom of speech. That's what he just done.
And civil duty.
And, that's right, and civil duty. We have a right to represent the people. If there are concerns from the people, we got a right to say it. But he'll adjourn the meeting. And somebody just called me today, before I was getting ready, before I was getting ready to come. Can you all sit down and talk? Can your mayor and some of your commissioners sit down and talk? I say, sure, we can sit down and talk. But no, after the night, there's no talking. There's no talking. There's no talking. Because whatever he says, it's gonna be a lie. And I will not believe it. I would not believe it. And I don't know what has happened for Tony Paul to turn into the person he's became. But God knows, this is wrong. This is wrong. No other mayor has ever denied an elected official from state and their concerns.
Counselor.
No other mayor. Yes, sir.
Commissioner, uh... I hear you talking a lot, and I'm just being honest with you.
Okay.
And I'm not ashamed of anything that I'm saying. I'd be on MSNBC, I ain't got nothing to hide.
Yes, sir, I got you.
My point is, I hear you bring up a lot of issues, and to me, some of them are, are, is beyond you. But somebody in the state of Georgia should be able to come and address these concerns, even with, you say the manager, I heard you talk.
Yeah.
In terms of, uh, executive session.
Right.
Now, if I wasn't going to 30 plus cities, I wouldn't know about going into executive session. Uh, I am a member of the press, and they denied me a right in Brooks County during the equipment 10 plus two case, where they brought him up on 100 to 200 charges. And eventually, all the charges were dropped. So here's a question. The Board of Election Chairman said I did not even have a right to record at a public meeting. And she was... And she worked for the, yeah, but here's the thing. Unless somebody in the state of Georgia addressed your concerns and the issues. Then how, how will you ever get resolved? How, how would Douglas ever get straightened out?
You're right. Well, the only way we can get straightened out is by the people going to the pole and unseating him. He needs to go. Tony Paul needs to go. Now, I've sat here and I've been real quiet about electing folks. But Tony Paul needs to go home. He has forgot why he's here. If he ever knew, it's time for him to go to the house. And these commissioners that's going along with him, they need to go as well.
Commissioner, I'm gonna ask you a question. And I know this, I don't post all this, you know, I don't edit much stuff.
Oh, yes, sir, posting.
But, but my question is this.
Check on her.
I hear you talk
Check on her.
About what you're saying, but don't you think that this should be out of your hands and should be concerned with someone else?
Sir.
Don't you think this should be out of your hands and with someone else?
The people.
No, not only the people.
And you say, on a higher level, yes, sir. So I'm gonna definitely, I'm going to definitely... I'm gonna definitely reach out to a higher authority.
And normally...
Because this is ridiculous, because like I said, my rights were violated tonight by not having an opportunity to express my concerns. He had no right to violate my right to freedom of speech.
I disagree with you on that.
He had a right to do that?
No, he didn't only dis, I mean, there was other people that had rights too.
Certainly, but they're not, they're not here talking about their rights.
And the citizens, and the citizens have a right to listen.
That's his right.
So they, they don't, they didn't get that right.
You're right.
This is, this is open government.
Open government.
This was in the handbook. This is sunshine law that I read all the time.
Yes, sir.
I've never seen nothing like this.
He's violating the law. He's violating the law.
So what do you think will happen in Douglas? I gotta go. What do you think will happen?
I pray that there's a new administration up in a few, uh, how many more weeks or so? January, a few months, October, November, December, January. I hope there's a new administration.
May I, may I give you a little piece of information?
Yes, sir.
That's not good enough.
Okay.
If there have been laws that have been violated with the sunshine law, and if all these elected officials were denied the right to continue this meeting because whatever system there may be, it should be out of the hands of a voting process. Georgia guy, I know, I go on the GMA, I talk to top level up there.
Yes, sir.
You ever talked to Larry Hans, nothing?
Yes, he's out of that office of Georgia. I've talked with him before.
May wanna call him again. Cause this, from what I see here, I'm gonna post, I may say this GMA myself.
Please do.
Along with some of the other videos that I have.
Please do.
So, so somebody can help the taxpayers to be represented. As the constitution of our democracy, so represent.
Yes, sir.
This is the get to Free Press. I'm George Voss Rhimes, and I report what others ignore.
Thank you.